We'd like to call the November 5, 2025, City Council Meeting to order. If you are able, please rise and join me for the pledge.
To the flag of the United Cities of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerks, please call the roll.
Mayor Nax, we're having audio issues tonight, hang on.
It is really loud.
Is that better? Mayor Naxstedt?
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniel?
Here.
Councilmember Sonart?
Here.
Councilmember Askin?
Here.
Councilmember Greamy?
Here.
Councilmember Cassena?
Here.
Student Representative Bulling?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have election of the mayor, and this is a... Speak forward. Sorry, Vice Mayor, thank you. I'm the mayor. And it's relatively straightforward. Anybody can make a nomination, it doesn't require a second. So I'm looking for nominations. Councilmember Cassena?
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Victoria Askin as Vice Chair or Vice Mayor.
Okay. Is there any other nominations? No other nominations? Without another nomination, then, Councilmember Askin is now Vice Mayor Askin. Congratulations. Are we having a technical difficulty? Do we want to take a moment, or what's... Okay, now we have approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Pleasure of council. Vice Mayor Askin?
I move we approve the agenda and consent agenda as presented. Second?
Are there any additions or revisions to the agenda and consent agenda from the council? Seeing none, would the clerk please read the consent agenda items into record?
Thank you, Mayor Naxstedt. Approval of the regular meeting minutes of October 15, 2025, brought to you by the city clerk. New business action approval bills to be ratified, brought to you by the administration. Action approval special use permit to Life Med Alaska LLC for ambulance warm storage, brought to you by the administration. Introduction of ordinance number 3492-2025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund. Streets Department for replacement of damaged guard rail on Beaver Loop Road, brought to you by the administration. Public carrying scheduled for November 19, 2025. Introduction of ordinance number 3493-2025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the general fund. Buildings Department for replacement of the cooling system in the city's data center, brought to you by the administration. Public carrying scheduled for November 19, 2025. Introduction of ordinance number 3494-2025, amending the official zoning map by rezoning seven lots and one tract to urban residential and two tracts to suburban residential along Reedout Avenue from Fourth Street to Flip Plain Road, brought to you by the administration. Public carrying on November 19, 2025. And introduction of ordinance number 3495-2025, authorizing the reallocation of capital project funds, an increase of estimated revenues and expenditures, and approving the sole source purchase of two patient power load system for ambulances, brought to you by the administration. Public carrying on November 19, 2025. And that is your consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any public comments on any of the consent agenda items just read by the clerk? Those are the ones with the asterisks. Okay, seeing none? Was unanimous consent requested?
Request unanimous consent.
Thank you. Are there any objections to unanimous consent? Okay, seeing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. So that brings us down to scheduled administrative reports. We have two, actually. The first is the Kenai Police Department accreditation, and I'd like to let Chief Ross do the introductions.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just a brief explanation, the Kenai Police Department was accredited about three years ago by Northwest Accreditation Alliance. We're one of the few police departments in the state that is accredited. We just finished this fall a re-accreditation process, and we've invited Scott Hayes. He's the Executive Director of Northwest Accreditation Alliance. He is very adept at helping agencies become accredited, maintain their accreditation, and just in general in law enforcement leadership. But before I let him say a few words about accreditation and our process, I just wanted to also thank our Lieutenant Ben Langham, who was our accreditation manager, who did an immense amount of work to make this happen for the police department. So, without further, I'll introduce Mr. Hayes.
Well, I just want to make sure that you can hear me okay and I'm not too loud.
Sound good.
Okay, super. Good evening, Mayor, councilors, and members of the community. As introduced, I am Scott Hayes, Executive Director of the Northwest Accreditation Alliance. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council and present the Kenai Police Department with its second award of accreditation under the leadership of Chief David Ross. Law enforcement is experiencing a changing society with increased demands for police accountability and transparency. As in the past, our profession must face these challenges and work with our communities to address their concerns. Accreditation is one step towards building community trust. The Northwest Accreditation Alliance Board is comprised of members of the Alaska Association of Chiefs of Police, the Oregon Association Chiefs of Police, the Oregon State Sheriff's Office, the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, and we provide accreditation services for six Alaska law enforcement agencies. Accreditation goals are straightforward. They are to support the continued improvement of law enforcement services, establish best practice through professional standards, to promote agency accountability and transparency, and enhance operational management. For the Kenai Police Department to become accredited, it had to adhere to 110 law enforcement standards. Compliance is generally in the form of policies and procedures and adherence to state laws, Alaska Administrative Code, constitutional provisions, and city policy. Our standards are established to best practice nationally and through federal and Alaska law. In addition to each of the 110 standards, the agency must also demonstrate proof of compliance, ensuring that it follows established policies and current best practice. Then, re-accreditation occurs every three years. This is a monumental step for any agency to be evaluated by an outside independent organization and have its policies and its procedures and practices scrutinized. I'm aware that several members were involved in the process, but I'd like to acknowledge, as the chief did, Ben Langham, the accreditation manager, who worked diligently with our folks to prepare the agency for review for the assessment. So Chief Ross and City Council, on behalf of the Northwest Accreditation Alliance and its Board of Directors, I'd like to congratulate you on receiving your second award of accreditation. And, just as a note, the agency was last accredited in September of 2022. And if you are interested, the other agencies in the state of Alaska was... Dillingham just joined us, Nome PD, Juno PD, Soldatna PD, and the North Pole PD.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Would you be available for any questions, council?
Absolutely.
Chief Ross? Did he cover everything that you didn't? Thank you very much for being here tonight, and I'm very proud of our police department. And I didn't realize there were that many items that you had to go through to do this. That sounds like a monumental task, particularly if you have that many other police departments to review. So, thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. You have a good night.
Good, thanks. So, that gets us to the second item under scheduled administrative reports. We have Kevin Bootner. He's our city planner, talking, going to talk about the Community Development Block Grant Program. Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. While we're getting the slides brought up, this is not the... Let me step back just a moment. We did not put the cart before the horse. I know that we brought legislation at our last meeting to authorize the grant, but as one of the steps we had to do for this grant is to actually have a public meeting to let the public know what is CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, and how can it benefit the city of Kenai, not just with the project that we're going forward with this round, but possibly in the future as well. All right. So, Community Development Block Grant, much easier to say, CDBG. It's federal funding, it's managed by the Alaska Department of Commerce, Community and Economic Development, and there's three main categories that this money can come down through. One is community development, which is kind of your nuts and bolts, infrastructure. Another is planning for certain types of planning efforts, and other special economic developments, which I'll get into these pretty briefly, but there are some caveats with all of them. With Alaska, it's up to $850,000 per community, per funding round, and they're encouraged to have 25% match, but the state and the federal government recognize that there are certain communities that may not be capable of meeting that match, so it is not a mandatory... It's not mandatory in the state of Alaska, it is in other states. They may also... They also do, this is not common with federal, they do allow some in-kind matching, so it does not all have to be cash. And they may fund phase projects, depending on how they're structured. So, some project examples, this is just a partial list, they have the whole page of things, but these are the ones that are a little bit more tailored to what we might see here in Kenai. Water and sewer systems, solid waste disposal, flood and drainage facilities at stormwater, docks and harbor improvements, local service roads. So for our project, we're looking at water, sewer, and local service roads combined. Some airport activities, ADA compliance for public facilities, so we don't really have an issue here with the general slope that we have to our front door, but if we had an older city hall and didn't have a ramp, they potentially could come in to help us rectify that. Like I said, we don't have that issue. Fire protection facilities and equipment, those are just some of the big ones under community development. Another bucket they have is planning. They recognize that some communities weren't fortunate to have a planning department, and I'm honored to be here, but we understand some villages, some smaller cities, may not have a robust planning department, so sometimes you have to get all your apples in the basket before you make the apple pie. So, data collection analysis, marketing studies, feasibility studies, community economic development plans, community land use plans, capital improvement plans, and plan updates. Again, we do a lot of that internally, but there's an opportunity for, oops, other communities. And special economic development, this is the one that is a little more fun to do, but this is where it turns into a private, a public-private partnership. They will fund some commercial and industrial improvements. They have, it is some assistance to certain private entities, but the caveats to that is they must create and maintain jobs for low-to-moder income persons. NMA assist businesses providing goods and services needed by and affordable to low and moderate income residents. So it's how do we help those low-to-moder income people? And that, the low-to-moder income is across the board, that is what we're looking at. So, there are certain parts of the city that, when you look at the census tract or the census block groups, are, they don't achieve that. So essentially, for the city of Kenai, west of the airport is what they consider low-to-moder income, where we have an opportunity to put this at this time, according to the last census. Currently, the core here where we're at and to the east does not meet that requirement, so those areas of town right now are not eligible, but it is in flux. So every time you have a new census and they drop new data, and it can even change within censuses, when they drop the American Community Survey data, which is every couple of years on a five-year rolling average, different areas come. It just, it depends on where things shake out. But for right now, west of the airport, so essentially from Birch, Birch Street to the west, everything there, right now is currently allowable. Certain things we cannot do with the money. Equipment, with the exception of fire protection, cannot purchase equipment for the city. Government buildings, again, with the exception of that removal of architectural barriers, so if you needed a ramp so that people of all abilities can get in, that would be allowable. Regular operations, regular maintenance, and political activities, all of those are forbidden. So we can't get this grant and then kind of run the city on it. This is kind of a one-stop, or one-project funding per round. The priorities for this, like I said, most targeted areas consisting at least 51% low and moderate income persons must achieve a public benefit, so this is not... Even if we do help with that special economic development, it does help a private business, but because we're helping them, it also helps the public because it helps those low-to-moder income persons. You also have to have two public hearings. Today is one of them. One prior to award, and then one will be during the projects if we are awarded. So, should we be awarded, that would happen in February, so later in the spring, early summer, we would have another one as the project commences to basically give an update to the community of what's going on. And, sorry, I'm just putting random pictures in here, but it's all part of our community. But to switch gears, so our proposed project this year is the installation of new water and wastewater mains along what will be Sixth Street north of Reedout Avenue. Construction of the local service road will access newly constructed low-income and senior housing developments, both which are right next to Reedout, and future phases that are planned just to the north. So this is their current site plan, and... Sorry. So currently, along Reedout Avenue, most of this has been constructed. What is currently under construction is this one building to the west of what will be Sixth Street with these three new buildings east, and then they're applying currently for funding for this next phase, which would be the next lot to the north. All of those lots have been conditionally donated. Sorry, my laser doesn't work. All of those have been conditionally donated by the city for the construction of those low-income and senior housing developments. And they've made quick work on most of them to include the four new buildings that you'll have up by next summer. Another thing that we have to do is we do have to ask if there are any other projects that currently are feasible, using the, under the guidance of this funding, whether they're feasible to be done. If anyone has any ideas of any projects, we'll definitely take those into consideration. A lot of this is also dependent on project readiness. These, this is going to get constructed even if it's not, if the grant is not awarded. That is the plan, there is a mechanism, they are already ready to go this way, but the intent to go after this grant is, one, to allow our partner, Kenai Peninsula Housing Initiative, to stretch her dollars and make things better. It will also help bring the water and wastewater mains closer to what the city owns to the north, and open, potentially open that area for development, and also to get the project done and done right. One of the key components of this is not only to bring the water up Sixth Street, but also to loop it back to Fifth, so that can keep us from having a long dead-end waterline. So, again, we're trying to use this not only to do the project, but to do the project right and be ready and planned up, ready for the future, for future expansion.
Thank you, Mr. Bootner. Council, do you have any questions of our planner here? Councilmember Cassena?
Thank you. Two questions. I think on your first slide, you had mentioned that there's 850,000 awarded per funding round. How many funding rounds are there, and how often are those?
So, there's 850,000 per community. There's one round every year. If other projects fall through, for whatever reason, other matching funds fall through or something else, the state could elect to have another one, but historically, it's been one a year. They open in October, close in December, thereabouts, depending on what the state administration's doing. And if we were, let's say we're awarded this coming year, this current, coming calendar year, they want to see 50 to 75% of the funds expended before you go again. So, if the city of Kenai were keen on going after this several times, you're looking at essentially once every two to three years, depending on how fast the projects move forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor Naxstedt. So, looking at what's eligible and what's not eligible, fire protection, does that mean like fire apparatuses, or what does that entail?
It does include PPE. I'm not certain, I'd have to look, because I wasn't looking for fire protection. I don't know if that would include helping fund a, like a new engine, but I will look into that. Some states do allow it, some states don't. There is a little bit of flexibility that the federal government gives each state, just depends on how they want to run the program, but I can answer that. I do know PPE and other equipment that may go into like a squad could be eligible.
Gotcha. Okay, I'd be very happy to look into that, thank you.
Councilmember Sonart?
Thank you, Mayor. So you asked us for consideration of the possibility of other projects in addition to the Sixth Street project? And so my question is, in your opinion, do you foresee, if we were to move forward with the Sixth Street project, would that not use the total sum of 850? And you're suggesting there might be money left over for an additional project? Or is this an additional project to hedge our bets in case the Sixth Street project, for whatever reason, fell through?
Thank you for the question, I'll clarify. We have to, we are obligated to ask the public as a part of this process if there are any other projects that they would want to bring forward. We open it to all members of the public, elected, not elected. So if there was another, this would be an opportunity for them to say, no, there's another project I want them to look at. Currently, the only one we have that is also ready to go is the Sixth Street project, and we think this would take up the entire 850.
Thank you for your clarification.
Okay, any further questions? Councilmember Cassena?
Thank you. Another question was, low and moderate income residents was used quite a few times. Is there a definition of what that is?
There is, they do have definitions of what it means per community, because it is relative to each community. And it also depends, so they have it at one individual, four, like a family of four, so it does kind of branch out. If I'm not mistaken, there is a, there's a whole table that goes with it, but I believe ours is in the upper 50,000 range. So if they're at that or below, it could, an annual salary, that's what would trigger. So, they're looking for concentrations of people, I'm not saying concentration of poverty, because people may not be in poverty, but they are lower to middle income versus the more affluent areas where those salaries may be in the 80s, 90s, six figures.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you for your presentation, and it seems that what you're planning on doing there kind of checks off most of those requirements, so it would appear that your probability is pretty good?
We are cautiously optimistic, as we should be. I do think it does jack off a lot of boxes, and especially helping, that they're already helping seniors, which is, they're a specific called-out, limited clientele is what they call them in this grant. I think that we have a really good shot at getting at least partial board, if not fully awarded.
Thank you very much.
Before you step down, would it be, I'm sorry, I said Mayor Gabriel. Mayor Naxstedt, would it be appropriate to tie this to a member of the public who has a question?
Oh, I don't believe we can take questions.
I don't know if it would be appropriate or not.
What we could probably do is, under unscheduled public comments. Okay, that'll be, just in a moment, okay? Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. So, under item C, scheduled public comments, we have none, so now we're up to unscheduled public comments. Are there any members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Please come forward. If you'd come forward, state your name and what city you live in or area.
And you'll have to push the button. We should have a bigger sign that says, "Push the Button."
Hey, you know, in audio. All right, good evening, my name is Maeve Spiegler. I came here on a whim, honestly, but I do know exactly what I want you to spend your money on, because there's a really easy fix we could do that would impact a lot of people. Fences around playgrounds. I don't know if anyone's talked to you about it, but we have a lot of elopers in our community, children who elope, specifically nonverbal autistic children, who don't have enough places where they can just be themselves and play. If you're looking for other projects, I came here tonight looking for a way to make this possible. It doesn't have to happen this year, it can happen next year or the year after, that's fine. My eventual goal is to make a whole other playground that is inclusive, has a wheelchair-accessible swing, as well as other things, but I think a great start would be fences around playgrounds that we already have, that already exist. Not enough of them are fenced in, and I've heard from a lot of parents that they don't have enough places to go where their kids can just run, and where they don't have to worry about them taking off across the highway, because they have absolutely no sense of stranger danger and no self-preservation. And their parents are guarding over them 24/7, they could use that moment. So, that's what I came here for tonight. I had no idea, well, I did know a little bit about the grant that you just talked about, because I did my reading 20 minutes, 20 minutes before the end of my workday, but anyway, I'm here tonight for that purpose. If you have any leads, let me know. Thank you.
Would you be available for any questions? Council, do you have any questions?
Great.
Thank you. What you might do is just kind of talk to our planner afterwards, or something like that, that would be a good way to get that moving. Are there any other members from the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none? That brings us to public hearings. The first public hearing before tonight is ordinance 3490-2025, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations in the wastewater treatment facility improvement capital project fund, accepting a grant from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for the Kenai Wastewater Treatment Facility Digestor Flowers Upgrade Project, and awarding the construction contract for the project, brought to us by administration, pleasure of council. Vice Mayor Askin?
I move we enact ordinance 3490-2025.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance 3490-2025? Seeing none? That brings us back to council. Council comments, Councilmember Askin? Council comments, council member Askin, do you have your mic on? Do you have something? Acting City Manager Ross, do you need a lifeline on, if you want to talk about blowers, sewer treatment plant? We'd probably like, we'd like to get a kind of a rundown on what, what this is.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll defer to Lee Frye. I think he'll, he'll speak more intelligently on it than I will. Thank you. So, a lot of things going on in this ordinance. The first is we are accepting a grant. We did receive the $2.9 million grant from, it's coming through U.S. EPA. It took us a long time to get to this point. We had to go through a whole application process with them to get everything approved, all of our purchasing designs and everything that we were doing on the property. So, we've gotten that complete application approved to finally accept this grant. Next, we do have some existing money that we've appropriated to this project. But after bidding it, we are short. So, we are requesting an additional appropriation of $750,000 to complete the project. And the last is the awarding to Blazey Construction. We did bid this project a while ago. So, we did go through some negotiations, looking through the prices, made some, some value engineering, pulling some various things out of the project. We were also adding a couple of things, not necessarily into the project, but into our budget here that we're hoping to possibly work with them or handle separately. Like our generator down there, we have a really old generator that's starting to show some age, needs some pretty, it's running now, but we do need to put some pretty substantial money into it to fix it. So, at the age of it, we're, we're recommending just replacing it with a newer generator at this time. So, I think that's about all I have. Open up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions now that we've got that clarification? Thank you, Lee. Any, any further discussion from council? Seeing none, please clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Naxted. Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassina?
Yes.
Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Student Representative Bowling?
Yes.
You have six yes votes. Ordinance number 3490-2025 is enacted.
Okay. Now, we are on item E2. This is ordinance 3491-2025, accepting the donation of three bronze statues from the Kenai Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, brought to us by administration per Kenai Municipal Code 1.15070D. And the reason that's in there is what we're doing tonight, we're asking to do is have it introduced and approved this evening. It's a, it is a non-controversial item and it's also time sensitive in that tomorrow it will be, you know, unveiled and, and accepted by the city. So, it would be appropriate for us to approve this, this donation this evening. So, I am now looking for a motion to introduce.
I move to introduce ordinance number 3491-2025. I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the introduction? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassina?
Yes.
Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Student Representative Bowling?
Yes.
You have six yes votes. Ordinance number 3491-2025 is introduced.
Okay. The second item we have is a pleasure of council regarding the motion to hold a second reading. Is there, council member Askin?
I move we enact ordinance number 3491-2025.
This would be just for the second reading?
Second reading.
Councilmember Askin?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassina?
Yep.
Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonard?
Yes.
You, Student Representative Bowling?
Yes.
You have six yes votes. Ordinance number 3491-2025 is approved for second reading.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And the second reading of ordinance number 3491-2025, accepting a donation of the three bronze statues from the Kenai Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, brought to us by administration for KNC 1.15070D. So, now we're to the point of enactment, pleasure of council. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Askin?
I move we enact ordinance number 3491-2025.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to ordinance 3491-2025? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Let's see. If I might, Ms. Bondurant, you're here and I know you're with this, this program. Did you want to speak to that at all? Are you, are you here on official business otherwise? Okay. Okay. I'm not going, I'm not going to push you. Anyway, before we, we call the roll on this, the unveiling will be tomorrow at 2:00 at the airport. And so, everybody's welcome. And hopefully, that'll be before the, before the snow starts flying and the wind starts blowing. Be another day like today, right up to that moment. So, if there's no further discussion, please, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Grimie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cassina?
Yes.
Mayor Naxted?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniel?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Askin?
Yes.
Student Representative Bowling?
Yes.
You have six yes votes. Ordinance number 3491-2025 is enacted.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, we are down to item E3. Resolution 2025-62, declaring the vacation of portions of utility easements associated with lots 8, 9, 27, and 28, block 7, Valhalla Heights subdivisions, Part 3, plat KN1568, as set forth in Attachment A, are not needed for a public purpose and are consenting vacation, brought to us by administration, pleasure of council. Vice Mayor Askin?
I move we adopt resolution 2025-62.
Second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to resolution 2025-62? Seeing no one, bring it back to council, discussion. Councilmember Daniel?
Perhaps a quick overview from our acting city manager would be in order.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel, to the mayor. Again, I'll defer to our planner, Kevin Butner. I think he'll be able to explain exactly what, what this is.
Thank you, Acting City Manager Ross. If you're looking at Exhibit A, and I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what page it is. The landowner owns four different lots. Two are on Standard Avenue, two face Phillips Drive. They put in a preliminary plat earlier this year. Planning and zoning went through, looked at it. They had utility easements on the rear of all four of their individual properties. When they put the new preliminary plat, they moved that to the front of the properties. Right now, there's no water and sewer that is on, already on their site. And they already have existing easements for the electric that they have out there. On the plat that they did put in, they avoided double frontage. So, they restricted access. There's not going to be access from Phillips Drive. It's going to stay on standard where the house already exists. So, this is just moving it from the rear of their property to the front. But since it is an easement, we had to declare that there was no public purpose for it since there's the new one up front.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor Naxted. So, they already replatted it and they're just trying to give rid of that easement? Is that what the goal of this is in the back?
Yes, they submitted their plat. It's not finalized. This is one step towards the finalization. It is conditionally approved at the borough, but we're waiting for a few other items to fall into line.
Any further discussion on resolution 2025? Go ahead, councilmember Askin.
Request unanimous consent.
Is there any objection to unanimous consent? Okay. Seeing none. Resolution 2025-62 carries. So, now that brings us to item E4. Resolution 2025-63, establishing the 2026 city council regular meeting schedule, brought to us by city clerk, the pleasure of council. Vice Mayor Askin?
I move we adopt resolution 2025-63.
Second unanimous.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Seconded with unanimous consent, I hear. Is there anybody with, from the general public that would like to speak to resolution 2025-63? Okay. Seeing no one, bring it back to council for discussion. Madam Clerk, would you like to? I think there was only one, one kind of odd thing in there on a date.
There, there was. Usually, there's generally only one meeting scheduled in July. But because there's an extra week in July, it was putting a five week span between meetings, which is a long time to, for a pause between city business. So, the city manager and I discussed moving that meeting to the second week of July, to July 8th. So, this schedule still only has one meeting in July, but it's not the first week of July.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objections? Seeing none. Resolution 2025-63 is, is adopted. So, now we are on item E5. Resolution, resolution 2025-64, mutually agreeing to terminate the lease located at 9711 Kenai Spur Highway with Alaska Center for Space Technology, Inc., brought to us by administration, pleasure of council. Vice Mayor Askin?
I move to adopt resolution 2025-64 and request unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Yeah, moved and seconded. Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to resolution 2025-64? Mr. Dillon, welcome.
Tim Dillon, President of the Board of Directors. This is something that weighs real heavy on my heart and a lot of the people in our community. When the revenue streams aren't there, and a lot of things have changed, especially in the last four or five years, when you look across the table, you need to be able to tell your staff where their paycheck is coming from and if they're going to get a paycheck. And when you get to a point where you can't do that anymore, you, you've got to make changes. So, I just wanted to say thank you very much to the administration. You know, they've been involved with, with this for the last month or so as we're working towards the November 15th date of being able to turn over the keys. And it's, it's one of those things that I know, I've answered a lot of questions from a lot of people. And if one bit of clarification, a lot of people think that NASA was sending boatloads of money to the Challenger Center. It goes the other way around. The Challenger Center is similar to an Arby's or a McDonald's. It's a franchise. And that's the way it was set up 25 years ago. And there were 50-some Challenger Centers around the country. They're down to 32 now. And we would send a check to DC every year. They weren't sending us money. And I just wanted to clarify that because there's, I've heard things about what's been on Facebook and everything else. And looking at operational dollars, there, there has been a lot of money to try and develop STEM programs, you know? And we've benefited from that. And a lot of folks on the peninsula have benefited from it. But when it comes to operational monies, when you have to pay your heating bill, your electric bill, your staff, those dollars aren't there. And I just wanted to say thank you to the, the staff especially because the last month, month and a half between Terry and Scott and Lee and everybody, it's, it's been a tough time. And, and they've been helping us the entire way. So, we are completely closing down as of November 15th. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Dillon, would you be available for any questions?
Councilmember Grimie?
Hi, Mr. Dillon. I'm Bridgette Grimie. And I wanted to tell you thank you that the building might be closing and your staff might be leaving, but the Challenger Center has had a huge impact on a lot of kids and families in this community. Both my kids participated in programs through Challenger Learning Center. I've worked at the Kenai Peninsula Youth Facility since before that building was built when we were at the old Main Street Courthouse. And your staff have been coming over and volunteering at Kenai Peninsula Youth Facility for, I think basically since we started that building. And they've made a huge difference in, in giving kids who've never really had a chance to be successful at things in life, the opportunity to experience little successes, especially in STEM programs where a lot of the kids that come through the doors at Kenai Peninsula Youth Facility haven't felt those successes in our school programs. So, I wanted you to know that the staff that you've had there have had huge impacts on, on kids and families in this community. And though your doors might be closing, your impacts and your legacies are, are going to be remembered and live on and continue to have an impact.
Thank you for saying that. Marnie Alcott, our executive director and the staff have really done a tremendous job. And one little thing, just so that you do know, we have a variety of things that we have purchased over the years, between some of the robotics and the Legos and the different pieces and all. Through our partnership with Marathon, a lot of you probably know Casey Sullivan. And Casey and I have been friends for years and he handles all the public relations side of things. We have, they've normally paid for our youth to be able to go on those missions. So, there's a whole list of classrooms that are not going to be able to come this next year. So, what we have done, working with Marathon, in fact, I had Clayton Holland, the superintendent, was in the building this afternoon for me with a meeting. We have put together, we're in the process of putting together a package for each one of those classrooms that are not going to be able to come. And it'll be something permanent for that classroom. So, whether it be robotics, whether it be erectors, any of the different pieces. Plus, we're working right now with the school district to see if some of the other curriculums that we own and that we've developed, that there's a way that they can go ahead and use them on different things. So, we're, we're trying to do our best right now. And as I said, it's a, it's a difficult time. But when you, when you, you look at a balance sheet, and a lot of you know me, I was the CEO for CAPED. I ran economic development on the peninsula for 10 years. I, I don't like closing things down. That's not something, it's taken a lot of time to do that. But, but you're right. I look around and I see a lot of the local folks that have come back that were touched by going to a program there that are involved, whether they're an engineer or researcher or something. My 40-year-old son has a brick there. And he's a research scientist now. You know, kids who are touched. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Councilmember Sonard?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for your service to our community. I'm very saddened to see the doors closed, but I get it. I understand bottom line. But when I was on staff at Kenai Central, gosh, this was, okay, a few years ago. I remember an in-service day where they took the entire staff over there and we got to go through all the programs that you had. And it was just, it was wonderful. And it, and it has been a wonderful program and outreach to many, many kids in our community. Because I know that the classes at Kenai Middle would go over, the classes at Kenai Central would go over. It just, I guess I'm one of the many people in this community that's sad to see the doors closed. And I just wanted to thank you for your service.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Askin?
Thank you, Mayor Naxted. I also want to thank you for your service. I had two generations. My son and granddaughter both have gotten to go through different programs. And you're going to leave a hole. Thank you.
Go ahead, student rep.
It's not a question, but I also wanted to say thank you so much. I remember when I was in seventh grade, my class went over to the Challenger Center. And going over there, I think, is what made me fall in love with space and engineering. And like, I think now my major that I want to go into is going to be aerospace engineering. But I remember, you know, sitting in the Star Dome and interacting with your staff and they were all so kind and helpful. I believe my little sister's class, elementary class, went over there just to... I believe my little sister's class, elementary class, went over there just a week or so ago. And I just wanted to say thank you. You made a huge impact on our students.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? Councilmember Daniel.
I went there, and I remember it and loved it. So, I mean, it's, I mean, my dad was a teacher for many, many years, Mr. Daniel, at Mountview, and he took his classes there all the time. It was, it's very special. But no, I just want to say thank you again, and it's, you know, it's, it's tough. But you definitely impacted a lot of people here, so.
Well, I will make sure that the, the staff, I actually had to lay off the whole staff here a little bit over a month and a half ago. But I will make sure I'll touch base with them and thank them because they're the ones that did the work, not me.
Councilmember Kessina.
I'm not going to say it any better than anyone else, but thank you, truly.
Tim, this is a really tough night, and I was hoping it wouldn't, wouldn't happen, but here, here we are. And I know the Challenger Centers have had, had difficulties in the past when, when Mr. Porter was in that position there, and he worked for years for a dollar, something like that. He was able to do that. And I think funding was easier then, too, just to kind of bring that back up. And I know that's all changed. But like most of my, the council here, I've had, I've got tiles in there with my kids' names on it, too, you know, from when that building was built. And, yeah, it's, it's tough, but it, this, this is a tough time of the, it's the times. Chief Ross, did you, did you have something you wanted to say as well?
I'll just thank you, Mr. Dillon, for being here. Thanks for your comments. I appreciate your explanation of that. I, I just wanted to share a couple of going-forward things in regard to the facility. The public works staff and the city administration have, have done a walkthrough of the facility with the administration from the Challenger, the board. They anticipate doing an assessment, our public works department, of that facility, and getting together and transitioning the utilities here in the next couple of days and figuring out with, with the board what, what the utilities are costing. I think the city administration will come back to council with an appropriation request to fund those utilities in that facility. That will probably be coming to the next council meeting. And then I talked to the city manager about this. He anticipates not scheduling it tonight, but probably at the next meeting, some sort of work session with council to discuss the, the future of that facility. He wants to collect some more information to share with you before that. So, so that was Mr. Uvay's thoughts going forward. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. We appreciate you. Any further discussion, council? Unanimous consent was requested. Are there any objections? Other than we don't want to? Resolution 2025-64 is adopted. So now we're, we're down to item E6. Resolution 2025-65. Authorizing the use of the Equipment Replacement Fund for purchase of a data center equipment software brought to us by administration, pleasure of counsel. Vice Mayor Askin.
I move we adopt Resolution 2025-65 and request unanimous consent.
I will second.
Okay, moved in second. And is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 2025-65? Seeing no one, brings us back to council. Council comments and questions? Clear on this? Unanimous consent was requested. Are there any objections? Seeing no objections. Resolution 2025-65 is adopted. So now we are on item E7. Authorizing the use of the Equipment Replacement Fund for the purchase of a new trackless MT-7 with snow blower attachment, brought to us by administration, pleasure of counsel. Vice Mayor Askin.
I move we adopt Resolution 2025-66.
I'll second.
Is there anybody from the general public that would like to speak to Resolution 2025-65, 66? Seeing no one, brings back to council. Council discussion. Reading through the, through the packet, I, I know we have another one of these online, and it seems to be much, much improved over the, over the smaller unit. I was wondering if we could kind of get a breakdown on, on what this piece of equipment will be used for? And maybe any, any other descriptions?
Thanks, Barr, again. Lee Frye, can you tell us about that?
Thank you. So this is a trackless snow blower. Essentially, is what we use this for is snowblowing equipment. We have two of these units already. One is just due for replacement at this time, so this is replacing that unit. Primarily, this is, the smaller tractor-style unit's got a little snow blower on the front of it. We use it mainly for clearing sidewalks, following behind a grader, helping clear driveways and things like that, keeping berms down, depending on how much snow we get. But that's what this piece of equipment is.
If I could, I thought we was replacing an MT-6. So this is an MT-7? They're the same?
It's the newer model style. They just, they're phasing out the MT-6. So the MT-7 is essentially the new replacement for an MT-6.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Was unanimous consent requested?
I request unanimous consent.
Is there any objections to unanimous consent? Seeing none. Resolution 2025-66 is adopted. So that brings us down to new business H7. Directing the, the Planning and Zoning Commission to review and make recommendations to update Kenai Municipal Code 14.10 subdivision regulations, brought to us by administration, pleasure of counsel. Vice Mayor Askin.
I move that we direct the Planning and Zoning Commission to review and make recommendations to update Kenai Municipal Code 1410 and ask for unanimous consent.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any members of the public that would like to, to comment on this? On this action item? Seeing, seeing none, brings us back to council. Council discussion. Perhaps we can get a breakdown from our planner on, on what this action is for the public.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's not do that. Thank you, Mayor. The, the administration, we've been looking kind of holistically at how we can not. Much better. We've been looking at ways that we can streamline development in, in the city or the process for development. And essentially, we don't, if there's red tape that we can cut on our end, we want to do that. And right now, we've realized that in our subdivision regulations, it gets very specific on certain things. And a lot of that is actually getting developed into a road design manual that Public Works is working on, as well as some water and wastewater standards that they're also working on. So it's our intent to refer to those policies that would be brought forth to council and if approved, then referred to by their name, by reference into code. But that way, if adjustments need to be made to those policies, it's a lot easier to do it there than to amend code over and over again because development standards do change over time, and we recognize that. So we're just trying to take some of the very specific, what should be, you know, put into some sort of guide or manual out of code, refer to that new manual, and allow us to be a lot more nimble and a lot more on the ball as changes happen in the future.
Thank you for that. Any, any questions? Councilmember Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor Nexted. Just so I'm clear, what you, what we're looking at doing here is just updating code, so it reflects to a manual instead of saying arbitrarily in code. What we do now is we need to make changes every time something comes up. Is that what we're trying to do here, just make it easier to?
That's going to be the biggest piece of it. There's also some just general updates that need to happen in that section of code. So planning zone, we'll look at it holistically, but a lot of it is to make it more nimble and a little bit more adaptable.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Unanimous consent was requested. Is there any objections? Seeing none. We will be moving on this, this direction to, to planning and zoning. So that gets us to item H8. Mayor, mayor liaison nominations for appointments to commissions and supervisory committee, brought to us by the mayor. And in addition to the nominations, I would like to appoint to the, it's on the bottom of the list there, the supervisory committee. Two would be per, per our, our code or our policy would be the mayor and the vice mayor. And I'd like to appoint Councilmember Askin as well to that. So I'm looking for, for a motion to approve. Yes, ma'am.
The committee is made of the mayor, the vice mayor, and one additional member. And we just.
Councilmember, Councilmember Sonar.
Thank you.
Did I say Askin? Okay, so. Now I understand the confusion.
I move to appoint confirmation of the mayoral nominations for appointment to commissions and supervisory subcommittees.
I'll second and request unanimous consent.
Okay, moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. The mayoral liaison nominations for appointment to commissions and supervisory committees have been approved. So that brings us down to item H9. Action approval, confirmation of mayor nomination for partial term appointment of Marty Askin to the Planning and Zoning Commission, pleasure of counsel. Councilmember Daniel.
I move to confirm the mayoral, mayoral nomination, I can't even say that well, for a partial term appointment of Marty Askin to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I will second that.
Okay, moved in second. And is there any, any discussion? Councilmember Askin.
I'd like to declare a conflict with the planning and zoning appointment because the applicant is my spouse.
You definitely have a, a conflict, so thank you for bringing that up. Any, any further discussion on the nomination? Seeing none. Unanimous consent was, was requested. So Mr. Askin is now a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So now we are on item H8. A discussion action item, scheduling a work session with the Salamanoff Tribal Council, brought to us by administration. So I, I believe in our packet, there was a, a week in there that was suggested, not necessarily a date in January. Have to get to that.
Week of the 12th.
Yes, January 12th.
January 12th, the week of the 12th.
And if I may also point out, that week, the council chambers has a beautification meeting on the 13th and a planning and zoning commission meeting on Wednesday, the 14th. So there are two days that are already tied up in here on that, during that week.
Okay, are we going to try to pick a date? Or just that some day that week would work? Because you don't know what day they're available, correct?
Yeah, I think if, if the council can confirm that date, then the city manage, that week, then the city manager can work to get a date set.
City manager Ross?
Mayor, I, I think in talking to the city manager, if you guys select a day, they were going to be available all week that week. So I think if you guys select a day, he'll try to make that, make that work.
Councilmember Daniel, go ahead.
Thank you. So any date that week? Remind me, Madam Clerk, what were the days that were not available that we couldn't do?
Tuesday, the 13th, and Wednesday, the 14th. The council chambers already has meetings.
Do we have to meet here? Do we want, or we meet with them with their location? Is that what we're planning on here? Or do we know?
I don't know the details of their location. I know that we do alternate where we meet with the, can I see? So that, that is a possible option. I just don't know what their availability on location is.
What about the chamber? Maybe that might be, I don't know if they're available. Maybe that might be a more suitable location, it's more room for another council. Do we have any thoughts on that?
Well, I think, I think for tonight, we're just going to pick a, pick a date. And maybe, maybe even a secondary date, and then, and then those details will, will, will be taken care of. Or we can come up with that. Councilmember Kessina.
I am good on the 12th.
You are what?
I am available on the evening of January 12th.
That is the Monday night. Councilmember Grimmie.
I, I was going to say, if you want a first and a second date, that really only leaves the 12th or the 15th. So if the 13th.
Leaves the 16th also.
Or the 12th or the 15th only.
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, if we're only looking at that week, and the 13th and the 14th is already got something going on, then that would leave us, I guess, to give them the choice between the 12th and the 15th. Or the 12th only, as, if that's the only day that you're available, sir.
Yes.
Okay, the 12th work for everybody here?
And the 15th.
Okay, and I guess keep the 15th in your pocket or whatever it need be. But the 12th is, is evening, so that works. So let's see. Now we are on item H11. Discussion action, scheduling a work session, discuss the city elections, brought to us by our clerk. Council, clerk Sainer, would you, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor Nexted. As you can see in the memo, the change in the date of the borough election will have an impact on our elections. And what I'm asking for is a work session. And at that work session, I can present options and ideas for the council to provide direction to me on how they would like to move forward with city elections. There's a lot of data to compile, so I'm not ready to present any of those ideas to you yet, but I should be able to have that together. And I noticed I put on the memo the 19th, but I know we have interviews happening on that day. If we wanted to push this back to the December 3rd meeting, we'd still have time for some of the options, should you choose them.
Anybody have any problems with December 3rd?
Not currently.
So that, you're suggesting December 3rd, which is a council meeting night, and we would meet probably before, and an hour before?
I think an hour before would be enough time.
Okay, so 5:00 or 4:30?
4:30.
4:30 going to work?
If you're asking for our preference, my preference would be 5:00, just for work, to get off work, et cetera, and not have to move things around there if possible.
I'll take the whole day off from work if I need to.
Well, go ahead, count. Do you have a question?
No, I'm good with either one, that's all.
Okay. Well, you, you think we can probably wrap it up in 45 minutes and probably?
When I compile all the data, if it seems feasible that we can get through it 45 minutes, I will schedule for 5:00.
Okay, so 5:00 on the 3rd then? Okay, everybody seems happy, so that'll work. So now we are on item H12. Discussion action item, selecting a subcommittee to develop interview questions for council applicant interviews. This is brought to us by the clerk. Clerk, do you want to kind of explain what that is for everybody?
Thank you, Mayor Nexted. So the policy that was approved by council in 2023 talks to a subcommittee, or the entire council can get together to develop interview questions. If it's a, the full council, we need to have a special meeting and an executive session. If you appoint three members to a subcommittee to work on these, then they can meet, we can, we can coordinate a schedule with them, and they can come in and develop those questions.
Okay, well, I'll be on that committee, so I need, I need a couple of volunteers that might want to.
I'll volunteer.
Okay, Councilmember Kessina had his, his bike on first, and now that, that leaves between Councilmember Grimmie and Sonar.
Yeah, I would like to volunteer for that subcommittee.
Okay, well, that would make the three of us. And so perhaps what we could do is after the council meeting here tonight, we could get together and decide in an evening. And I do have some questions already prepared, but it can be modified, thrown out, whatever, it's just a starting point. So I'll do that.
I'd actually like to, if Councilmember Sonar would prefer to do it, she's been on council longer and I think would have probably better input than I do, if you were wanting to still volunteer.
Well?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Cassena, but I think you are totally adequate and ready for the job. And you do bring a little bit of borough experience to the table. So, no, have at it.
Okay. It didn't work. You're stuck. Okay, thank you very much. Commission reports, thank you. I was working around over here to get to my calendar. First one is council on aging, and their next meeting is on November 13th. And I have no business to provide. Airport Commission, Councilmember Daniel.
Nothing new to update, just a couple little things. Brown bears, don't forget, 2 o'clock tomorrow, very exciting. But nothing new from the Airport Commission meeting, and their next meeting is on, oh my goodness, I'm drawing a blank, it's Thursday, the 13th, thank you, because you're on that mission now, so.
Thank you for that. Harbor Commission, Cassena?
Thank you. Works session is scheduled for November 10th at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and the regular meeting is scheduled immediately afterward at 6:45.
Okay, thank you. Parks and Recreation would be Councilmember Dothitt, but I have a note here, there was no meeting and there's no November meeting also, so their next meeting will be in December, perhaps. So that brings us to Planning and Zoning Commission, Vice Mayor Askin.
Thank you, Mayor Naxted. So the Planning and Zoning Commission met on the 22nd of October, and they had two preliminary plots with shoreline heights, and they also had a public hearing where the Resolution 2025-29, they recommended the city council amend the official zoning map to rezone seven lots and one tract to urban residential and two tracts to suburban residential. They also discussed direction from the Kenai City Council to explore the issue of tent camping within the city, and are requesting inclusion of the comprehensive plan project into FY 2027/2031 City of Kenai Capital Project Improvement Plan. And then they were scheduling end of the year meetings and work sessions. And their next meeting is next Wednesday, the 12th.
Thank you very much, and you're still up with Beautification Commission?
No meeting, and I believe the next one is scheduled for January.
Okay, thank you for the reports. So that brings us to the report of the mayor. I wanted to congratulate the Kenai Police Department and Chief Ross and the work that Officer Langham did to provide the accreditation again for another three years, and I think that's really huge and wonderful. I wanted to welcome Councilmember Gremmy to the council. Glad to have you here, and we'll kind of go from here, and I'll look forward to having our little meeting here soon on those questions. In the packet, I noticed that Tyler Best had included the 2025 Personal Use Fishery Report, and I wanted to thank him for all of his work on that. And it's actually some pretty good reading, about a lot of statistics in there and monies. I wanted to also thank our Public Works Department on the lighting repairs that we've been seeing the last few years. We've been talking about it, and they kind of gotten, some have gotten fixed, sort of. And I've noticed widespread lighting that wasn't lit before, and the public has been noticing that too, and I just want to say thank you for, something's changed, it's happening, and it's much appreciated. Perhaps it's some of the studies and whatnot and what needs to be done, but it's happening, and it's being noticed by everybody. Last couple things are, kind of a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce. I had an opportunity to walk through their haunted house without the ghouls jumping out, so I got that kind of a tour, and it was, so I got to enjoy all of the things in there, and it was absolutely amazing, and I think better than the previous year, and probably be great next year. So if you get an opportunity, you don't have to tow a kid down there, you can go down there yourself and enjoy it. The last two things I have is on October 28th, I met at the Rotary Club here at Kenai and did a trip presentation on primarily myself and whatnot, and that was quite enjoyable. On October 29th, I was really pleased to be able to speak at the Bluff End of Project Meeting at the Senior Center. The Corps of Engineers was there, Western Construction, the consultants, and the room was full of individuals and whatnot, and a lot of people here that are really appreciative of that project, how quickly it went together, and how it looks, and its performance. So anyway, I think it's something else you'd be proud of. That is all I have. So that brings us to administrative reports. Acting City Manager Ross?
All right, I have a number of items from the city manager's office to share with you. To begin with, the recruitment is ongoing for the airport manager, the chief animal control officer, a rec center attendant, and a temporary equipment operator position. The airport's excited to welcome Julie Simmons as the new administrative assistant at the airport. She has experience working at federal airport regulations, and she has a degree in aviation, so we're excited to have her onboard. I'm sure Mary's excited to have her onboard. I'd like to recognize the Planning Director, Kevin Butner. He was recently elected as the president of KPED, the Kenai Peninsula Economic Development District, and we appreciate his leadership and his participation on that board. The community survey that the city sent out is off to a good start. I think there's 88 results and 88 surveys that have been turned in, so they're doing some final outreach of texts and emails, I think, to try, or calls, to try to get the rest of those results. I think that's going to be done November 21st, and after that following week, that survey will be posted on the website for other people to take, once they finish the first portion of that. The Parks and Rec Department installed permanent signs on the city's property along Toyon Way down on the bluff there. It's been an erosion problem, saying that the bluff is closed and identifying it as an erosion control area, just so you're aware of that. The Public Works confirmed that HDR will be present at a project wrap-up presentation for the Bluff Stabilization Project at the December 3 meeting. It'll include a discussion of the estimated erosion at the top of the bluff and potential future designs for maintenance access of that facility. The Kenai Senior Center is preparing a DOT grant application for an ADA accessible vehicle. The Kenai Senior Connection has committed to the 20% match for that grant. The project ranked first at last month's Human Services Transportation Prioritization Meeting, and a supporting borough resolution is expected next month for that grant. Kayla Feltman, the Activity Volunteer Coordinator at the Senior Center, earned national certification from the National Certification of Council for Activity Professionals, so congratulations to Kayla for her efforts to get that certification. And lastly, it's already been brought up, the Bronze Bear Sculpture unveiling is at 2:00 PM tomorrow, but I wanted to add that there is a meet the artist reception at the Senior Center, Sculptor Stan Watts, at 5:00 PM at the Kenai Senior Center. Both the vents are free and open to the public, if you're interested in being at those. I'll also, again, acknowledge Mary for her efforts in the fundraising and organization to help make that happen, the Bronze Bear Sculpture. That's all I have.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Ross? Councilmember Cassena? Nope, just, okay. Now we have City Attorney Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor Naxted. Members of council, I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have a question for Mr. Bloom? Seeing none, that brings us to City Clerk Sainer.
Thank you, Mayor Naxted. I have nothing to report this evening, available for questions.
Thank you very much. So that brings us to item L, additional public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, that brings us to-
We have one.
Do we have one? Oh. Mary Bunderron.
Come on.
I tried to drag you out earlier, so I didn't even think.
Mayor Naxted, members of council, thank you for passing the ordinance early on, on behalf of the working group, and just to give you an update on the Bronze Bear project, it was a very, very exciting day. They are here, they're installed, they are installed within a couple hours, they are magnificent. We have several of the sponsors that are going to be at the unveiling tomorrow, which is 2 o'clock. We'll have coffee, cocoa, Missy's cookies from the Senior Center, and the mayor will have a few things to say. And the artist came, he flew into Anchorage yesterday, he drove down, he had a beautiful drive, hopefully this when they go back, Saturday, but they're here. I spent a lot of time with him today, he's just a great man, and he's looking forward to tomorrow. And 5 o'clock, we'll be at the Senior Center, we will have food in NoHo's Bar, and we have a silent auction going on with about 15 specialty items that you'll be able to bid on, and it's open to the public, and we hope to see everybody there. It's been a long two years.
Thank you, Mary.
And I'll answer any questions that he has.
And Mary, you had this idea when you were airport manager, when we were going through the renovations, and there wasn't any funding for it, and then time went on, and you made something out of nothing. A lot of something-
She's not going to brag about it, so I'm pulling it off. I got a little emotional today when I saw the bears, and Mr. Watts offered his shoulders, so I completely done it. But yeah, it was really exciting, and we were able to, we kept the fence up, but now they're covered up, and the fence is down, and everything looks really great, and it's just going to be a great addition to the airport.
Yeah, and if I could, Mary, since it's going to be tough dragging things out of you, I was part of the committee too, initially, as a liaison with the council here. We had a meeting here, and I sat around, and this, Mary had her idea, and what do you guys think? And I said, I think it's a great idea, but, you know, where's $200,000 going to come? How do you get from nothing to that point in this community? And they did it. Mary and Christine Cunningham were really the leading charge on that, and you guys were an amazing, amazing team. You still are.
I'm sure my number's blocked, okay? Are you people?
Go ahead, turn on your mic, so you can-
I'm sure my number's blocked now for a while from local businesses, I'm not asking for money. It was a little rough, you know, I write grants, not asking for money, so it was a real learning experience, but everybody was really nice and very professional, and, you know, $170,000 in six months. It was, and this is the nucleus of this. We have other things we want to add, you know, getting the bears here, getting them set up, like we're going to add a couple lights, we have a message board with the message from the Kenai Seas, we have a donor recognition board that will be installed in the terminal in the spring, and then we'd like to move on to something at the south end of the terminal. And, you know, we're looking for people and ideas all the time, so just reach out, and we'll accept anybody's assistance and help with it, and it's a lot of fun. Be a great project.
Good, thanks, Mary. And tomorrow for the 2 o'clock thing, probably everybody ought to bring a coat, because the first part's going to be outside, and the unveiling, but we can come inside, and we can actually see the bears from inside as well, right?
Yeah, it's going to be short and sweet, but hopefully the weather will hold off, and we can do it, and then go inside, and everybody can mingle, but-
Hold off on what? Cold to colder? Cold to a little bit less?
No, the snow, the snow. So it's gone from four to five inches to one to two, so you never know.
Not until after 2 o'clock, so-
Yeah, so thank you. Thank you for all your support.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Any further questions of Mary? Councilmember Gremmy?
Thank you.
Oops, sorry.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate that the bears are going to be a really tangible representation of the generosity of Kenai community as a whole, and that in a short period of time, even when they're, you know, things have been tough the last couple of years financially for a lot of folks, they still were able to dig into their pockets and give to something that's going to be a good tangible reminder to not only residents here who come in and out of the airport, but people who visit our community.
Okay, any further questions? Mary, thank you very much for everything you do. Are there any other members from the public who would like to address the council at this time? Seeing none, that brings us to council comments and questions, so we can, if it's okay, we'll just start at the far end. Councilmember, I could start from down here. How about, are you good?
It's fine, yeah, no, it's fine. I'm excited to be here. Thank you for helping me survive my first meeting, I appreciate it. I also wanted to point out that I have noticed the streetlights in not just my neighborhood, but a couple others in Kenai, which I really appreciate, especially since Halloween last week. My neighborhood turns into like, I think, a Hallmark movie at Halloween time, there's kids everywhere. It's actually one of my most favorite things about living in the neighborhood that I live in, and I'm especially grateful for Kenai PD's extra presence in our neighborhoods and in the streets during Halloween, when we've got kids and cars and dogs and everything everywhere. You know, everybody is happy and just there to get their free candy, and I really appreciate you guys rolling through and being a positive presence in our neighborhoods. I also went to the haunted house, and I got chastised all the way through over the loudspeaker, but I survived. I didn't cry or pee my pants, so I'm calling it a win. I did want to give a quick shout out to Kenai Central High School. The swim team competed in regionals in Homer last weekend, and kind of big news, the 200 medley relay teams, boys and girls both took first place. The girls' team actually broke the school record twice. The first time they tied to the hundredth of a second against Colony, and then swam against Colony again and beat them, breaking the school record again. So we're sending four girls to state on that team. Emma Castemore, who is our IT director's daughter, I'm not going to say her name right, do you know her?
Ila Kraus.
Ila Kraus, Abigail Price, and Kaylee Kraus. Boys 200 medley relay team's also going, that's Lyman McBride, Fletcher Dar, Bennett Martin, and Jacob Merritt. And two more swimmers took first place in regionals, Abigail Price and Fletcher Dar. So we're sending six boys and six girls to state. They're actually traveling today, because the roads are yucky, so they couldn't leave tomorrow. So I really, good luck to them at state. And Kenai Marching Band is sending a bunch of kids to Indianapolis to compete in the Bands of America Grand Nationals. It's the only second time that an Alaska band has ever gone, and they're going to be there with over 100 other bands, up to 50,000 performers and spectators are going to be there watching them perform Call of the Wild. So that's pretty awesome for little KCHS and KMS.
Thank you. Did Rep. Boeing, do you have anything else to say? Actually, you can repeat some of that too, if you like.
Oh, no, you're good. I think we all got it, it's a mouthful, for sure. Congratulations, Mayor Matt Naxted, and Vice Mayor Askin, and Ms. Gremmy. You know, you kind of said a lot for me here, but KCHS and KMS will both be hosting canned food drives. KCHS, our canned food drive is going to start November 12th, and cans can be given to students, you know, kids, grandkids, and brought in, or you could bring them to the front office, I believe. And all of the cans will be donated to the Food Bank in Soldadna. Cross-country skiing is beginning their fall warmups as we wait for some snow. Hopefully we get some soon here. And once again, we'd like to thank you all for your support with our students.
Thank you very much for the report. Councilmember Sonar?
I would simply like to congratulate Chief Ross down there for the accreditation honor again. I am sure with something of this level, there's probably tons of paperwork and red hoops, or red tape to get through and hoops to jump through, and I just recognize that your leadership has steered the course for this success, so thank you very much. And I also want to welcome Councilmember Gremmy?
Gremmy.
Gremmy, okay. And congratulate Mayor Naxted, and congratulate Vice Mayor Askin.
Okay, Vice Mayor Askin?
Thank you, Mayor Naxted. Welcome, Bridget. I'm glad to have you here. Congratulations also to the Kenai Police Department. You not only did all the work you guys have put in, but you've led the charge statewide as far as being an outstanding police department. Congratulations to Kevin and to Kayla Feltman at the Senior Center. I plan to be at the bronze bear unveiling tomorrow, and also attended the Bluff Erosion Project. The best costume I had at my house was the mom and dad were the fork and the spoon, and the kids were sporks. It was pretty awesome.
Genetics at its best. Councilmember Daniel?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Naxted. That's funny, so. I went as a banana, so, you know. Myself and Councilmember Daughitt and all of our kids, it was a good time. So anyways, congratulations again to our new council member, Gremmy. Looking forward to you being here, excited. And to the Mayor Naxted and Vice Mayor Victoria, awesome. Lots of congratulations around. I won't go through them all, since you guys did such a great job. I want to say one thing, I see you're online, Ms. Springer. Your haunted house, my son went through it, I shouldn't say yours, the Chamber's haunted house, son went through it. Told me at the end, it was scary. And then later he admitted, well, there's just one part, and it's like, I knew it. So anyways. But thank you for putting on a good community event that a lot of kids and adults enjoy. So I really appreciate the Chamber and everything the Chamber does. Also attended the Bluff Project, and that was well, well, the Bluff Public Project, I don't know what you want to call it, and Vice, or the mayor was there, had a, a nice speech, and we had a lot of memories from the public and missy cookies, so that was, that was good, well attended. That project blew everybody away, being done in a year, so. Very, very exciting for the city for that Bluff Erosion Project to be completed. And I'll say that's about it. I keep going, but I'd like-
No, keep going.
I'd like you to ta, take the spotlight.
Councilmember Cassena?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Phil. It's a pleasure to be here. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what else to say. Welcome, everybody. I think everyone's first meeting as mayor, vice mayor, new council. You guys knocked it out of the park, so great job. Officer Langham, great job. Speech, if you want to give a speech, go to your department for that, anyone. But yeah, other than that, Halloween was great. Fifth year for Slapshot Regatta, and we had 132 participants, both kids and adults, you know. So one kid came up and said this was his fifth year trying, and he, he finally made it, so, yeah. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Okay, we have no executive session nor pending items, so that brings us to adjournment. Having no further business, the body is adjourned.